Good evening. Welcome to the October 16th, 2023, meeting of the Stillwater City Council. This time I will call the meeting to order and ask that you all stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) 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 (inaudible)
All right, first up tonight, we have a proclamation in recognition of Domestic Violence Awareness Month. I'll go ahead and read this and then introduce our special guest. Whereas the City of Stillwater encourages positive action on the part of the community by supporting Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and whereas Domestic Violence Awareness Month is designed to support victims of domestic violence in their time of greatest need, and whereas approximately three American women each day lose their lives as a result of domestic violence, and whereas unhealthy relationships can have a lifelong negative impact on personal health, and whereas we can break the cycle of domestic violence before it starts by equipping families with skills for healthy relationships, and whereas parents, community leaders, civic organizations, and schools are an integral part of providing safe, healthy, and positive support systems for survivors, and whereas assisting survivors is not just an investment in their future, it's an investment in Stillwater for generations to come. Now therefore, I, William Joyce, Mayor of the City of Stillwater, recognize the need to honor and support domestic violence survivors and hereby declare October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And we have Brandy White, the Executive Director of Wings of Hope Domestic Violence Shelter, here with us to let us know a little bit more about this recognition.
Hello. So first of all, on behalf of more than 850 women, men, and children who sought services at Wings of Hope last year, I want to thank you for this and honoring them in this way. And then second, I would like to invite the City Council, as well as the rest of the Stillwater community, to join us this Thursday for Go Purple Day. Usually we say Go Orange, but we're going to say Go Purple. We would like for everyone in our community to show their support for survivors by wearing purple on Thursday, October 19th. Thank you.
Thank you, Brandy.
Brandy.
I will add my encouragement to wear purple, and if you don't know about Wings of Hope and the services that they provide to domestic violence victims in our community, I would encourage you to check them out. It's one of the very, very few actual domestic violence shelters in our state, and so they could always use your support and would encourage you to do that. Not just this month, but all year long. Next up, the Consent Docket. Councillors, questions, comments, or action on the consent docket?
Pull item F, please.
We will pull item F from the consent docket. Anything further?
I move approval of consent excluding item F.
Second.
With a motion and a second to approve consent minus item F, please vote. With a vote of five to zero, consent docket minus item F is approved. I have no one signed up for public comment on items not scheduled for public hearing, so we'll kick it back over to Councillor Harden for comment on item F. Do we want to have Kelly read?
Yeah. Go on up, Kelly. I spoke with Kelly today, and I was struggling with the concept that we're trying to sublease something that I thought was occupied already, like, okay, like move over, we're going to sublease your second bedroom, or something like that. So please explain to us what's going on there.
Sure thing. So there's two items on the agenda tonight. The MOU was on consent, and then we have a resolution for the Hangar Two transfer from Stillwater Aircraft Services to Stillwater Flight Center. So the MOU specifically that was on the consent calendar is speaking to the need to memorialize support that Stillwater Flight Center is going to provide the airport and two of our tenants. Hangar One is slated for demolition, which has been in our master plan because of its age, and in that space, once it's demolished, we're going to develop the terminal, the new terminal. So in that process, we have to provide space for two tenants that are in Hangar One currently, Quality Aircraft Maintenance and Hangar One Flight Center. So this is memorializing Stillwater Flight Center, making space for those two tenants as part of an agreement for the Hangar Two transfer. It would have been beneficial if we could have utilized Hangar Two for the purpose of these two tenants, but instead of that opportunity happening, we have the opportunity to support Stillwater Flight Center with this lease transfer.
So Hangar Two is not technically used anymore? They're still?
It is underleased by Stillwater Aircraft Services. They vacated the airport earlier this year in February and have resumed their business in Cushing, so they are not currently utilizing the hangar for mechanic services like they were previously.
Thank you.
Councillors, any further questions?
Motion to approve item F on the consent docket.
We have a motion and a second to approve the item. Please vote. It's approved with a vote of five to zero. Thank you, Kelly. That takes us to item seven, public hearings. Seven A is receive public comment regarding a request from Happy Days Investment for a map amendment to rezoned property addressed at 847 West Eskridge Avenue from small lot single-family residential to two-family residential, CC-23-158. Did we have good notice on this item? Ms. Carley.
Yes, we do.
Ms. Porter.
All right. Good evening, Mayor, council members. My name is Jaclyn Porter. Presenting on behalf of the Planning Department, Happy Days Investment LLC is requesting a map amendment for the property addressed as 847 West Eskridge Avenue from small lot single-family, which is RSS, to two-family residential RT. The subject property is located at the southeast corner of the West Eskridge Avenue and North Washington Street. Here's an aerial view. North of the subject property is Will Rogers Elementary, O'Brake Stadium is to the south, Hillcrest Baptist Church is located to the southwest of the property, and Western Heights subdivision is to the west. This is a street view looking east on North Washington Street. The applicant has plans to demo the existing structure. Here's a zoning map of the subject property. Public zoning is located to the north, and RSL is to the west. RTM is located in the vicinity to the northeast where there are about six duplexes at the intersection of Ranzi and West Eskridge. The future land use map projects the desired use of the subject property to be university. Happy Days Investments LLC proposed the project where the subject property is a nine-story, or nine, three-story townhomes. Nine stories is going to be really tall. Three-story townhomes with garages. The access to these garages will be off of West Eskridge Avenue. The frontage of the townhomes will be facing North Washington, and the garages in the rear will be facing to the east. The map amendment is to allow the proposed project to meet density requirements. The next item on the agenda is a specific use permit to allow townhomes in the RT zoning district. Kelly Harris is with Bancroft International, is here on behalf of the applicant. I will allow her to explain why she chose the avenue to go to RT instead of RTM or RMI where townhomes are used by right. At this time, are there any questions for staff?
Councillors? I would just ask, on the current zoning map, if you can pull that back up, it's, I guess, I mean, the university owns all that property, it's a parking lot. It says RSS on the zoning map, but that's all just a parking lot, and everything RT to the south of there is all university. Do we, I mean, I assume when they obtained that property, they didn't have to get it rezoned to do what they wanted to do, and so it just shows up on it. Is there any way we can update our maps to, I mean, I wouldn't, I guess if you're just looking at it, you might think there's single-family homes around us, but there's not.
I believe we'd have to go through all the rezoning process to do that. If we want to trigger that, we can.
Okay. Councillors, any further questions for staff?
One quick question. Eskridge, isn't that a one-way street?
No.
No, it's two.
I could have sworn I've been caught there trying to get into Will Rogers a couple times, so my apologies for.
Sometimes it feels one-way because of the Will Rogers traffic, but it is two-way. My office joins Eskridge.
Okay, great, thanks.
All right. Well, at this time, I will open the public hearing. I know we have a representative from the owner. Kelly?
Good evening. I'm Kelly Harris with Bancroft International, formerly Keystone Engineering, located at 923 South Lowry. I'm here representing the owners tonight. We are requesting the rezone tonight to construct the townhomes. As Jackie mentioned, townhomes are allowed with a specific use permit in both RSS and RT zones. However, the number of units that we're proposing is what is triggering the request to RT. The building height and setbacks are both the same in RSS and RT zones, and we will not be requesting a variance to those. We understand the comprehensive plan calls for this property to be owned by the university. However, that did not happen as the university purchased all the land around, and they have no interest in purchasing it now. We're proposing to keep the residential use and not propose any commercial uses in this area. That's been an issue in the past. This is, there is a multifamily zone just to the east of the elementary school, and Washington is a natural zoning line. With this property located along a busy road and surrounded by a baseball parking lot, we feel that residential with a higher density would work well here. Townhomes are allowed by right in the higher-density, the RTM zone. The neighbors in the area have been very involved in how this property, involved, interested how this property develops in the past, so we chose to go with RT with a specific use permit so that we could be upfront with what is planned. We felt that asking for RTM outright would have caused concern about apartments and more commercial uses. I know this item that we're talking about right now is just for the rezoning, but some questions came up at this point during the Planning Commission about what the specific project would be. So would you like for me to kind of go over the specific project now or hold off till the next item?
I think I prefer that we wait.
Okay.
So we can consider the zoning without consideration of the specific project.
Absolutely. Do you have any questions for me then, at this point?
Doesn't look like it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kelly. I don't have anyone else sign up to speak in this public hearing. Was there anyone here planning to speak on this item? All right. Jaclyn, what was the, oh, I'm sorry.
(inaudible) asking for people who's speaking in favor of.
Either way. Did you have, were you planning to speak about this item?
I was.
Can we just get you to, I think we've got a form, but go ahead and come on up and introduce yourself. Give us your name and your address, please, and provide your comments.
Get my notes out. Yeah. So my name is William Decker. I live at 1100 West Graham Avenue, and I'm here to speak in opposition to the construction of these townhouses. I've got several things to say. I'm going to try to get through them pretty quickly, so here goes.
You have a five-minute clock. So as long as you can do it in five minutes.
I think I can do it in five minutes. All right.
Thanks, sir.
Good. That's good to have. So I oppose a proposed construction on the following grounds. First and foremost, the proximity to the school. Most residents would probably be good citizens, but nothing guarantees that members of the transient population that will reside in these townhouses aren't, number one, sex offenders; two, people who have alcohol and drug dependencies; three, people who have firearms in a state where firearms are very permissive. Second point, the volume of traffic, also a hazard to schoolchildren, will increase because there will be residents and there will be their guests. Also, I oppose on the grounds of its proximity to the neighborhood. Compared with the school, an unvetted transitional, transient population poses less directive if still significant hazards to neighborhood residents. The volume of traffic on Washington Street, where the speed limit is 35, but vehicles commonly approach 50 and 55, will simply be compounded. The construction of these townhouses would be further confirmation that this neighborhood is becoming a revenue stream for investors who live elsewhere. And finally, I would oppose it for the likely destruction of the property's contribution to the neighborhood's tree canopy. So for all those reasons, I am hoping that people think long and hard before giving the green light to increasing the density of population so close to a school and so close to a neighborhood that is making every effort to kind of preserve its character, safety for its children, safety for its residents. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you being here. Was anyone else planning to sign up to speak? All right. This time, I'll close the public hearing and ask Jaclyn to come back up and let us know what the Planning Commission's recommendation was.
All right. Planning Commission's recommendation was approval of a vote of five, or four to zero. There's only four of them that day.
Councillors, questions, comments? Action on the rezoning only.
I think as we've evaluated this property in past proposals, it's a very odd property, parcel of property, sitting kind of in the sea of that parking lot as just a single-family home right now. It's a challenging parcel for a property owner to do something with. I'd certainly prefer, from a residential perspective, a transition to a slightly higher density as opposed to the commercial that we've seen in the past as a buffer to that neighborhood.
Yeah, I, it's my understanding that they've tried to, the university tried to buy this originally, and then the owners at the time wouldn't sell it, and now it's kind of, it is hanging out there as sort of an odd piece, and certainly this makes more sense as a residential-zoned area than as a commercial-zoned area, which is what's been requested before, so.
And I pass this property several times a day, and it's really become an eyesore. It's become a rental property, and there are trashcans, literally the city carts are typically littered around the yard. There was storm debris in this yard for months after the last big windstorm. Seeing something happen here to get rid of this eyesore located between one of our newest elementary schools and O'Brake Stadium that has lots of people passing by it every single day, I think is a positive thing. It's not going to be apartments, it's going to be townhomes. I think that brings a different class of individuals who would be living in there. There's no way to know that for sure, obviously, but I view this as better than what's there now, for sure.
Further comments or action on the item?
I would also add just that the townhomes, I know we're not looking at that piece yet, but they do appear to be a caliber that would not be necessarily just apartments that college students are living in.
I move to approve, or to approve the Planning Commission recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the Planning Commission's recommendation. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, the item is passed. It takes us to item 7B, receive public comment regarding a request from Happy Days Investments for a specific use permit to allow townhomes in a two-family residential district at property addressed as 847 West Eskridge Avenue, CC-23-159. I assume we also had good notice on this item?
Yes.
Jaclyn, what else do you need to add here?
Not a whole lot. I'm not going to add too much. As mentioned, the SUP is required to obtain, or for them to proceed with the proposed project of the townhomes in an RT zoning district. Kelly, as mentioned, she'll go into more details on the specs of this project. I also have, if you want more visuals of what it's going to look like, that she can go into details on. But are there any questions for staff on this specific item?
Jaclyn, it's been a little bit since we've had an SUP that wasn't for a dispensary. Could you please just remind us and kind of the community what has been the process so far? So where it's been through Planning Commission with the specific use permit, has there been any discussion with the community, the neighborhood, things like that? Just kind of remind us what the SUP process looks like for a project like this.
So a project like this, it follows along the same lines of a map amendment, so it goes to Planning Commission, and they view it as, at their meetings. This was also at Planning Commission presented with the map amendment, similar to this setup. And then it comes here. We provide the notice of 300 feet of the property owners that are adjacent. We just do the similar process of the map amendment, and then any questions we get, we receive, and we try to give it to y'all in a report, so.
So the community receives letters prior to, as notice of this meeting?
Correct.
Okay.
Councillors, further questions for staff at this point? This time, I'll open the public hearing. I know the owner's representative is here. Kelly, if you'd like to head back up and let us know a little bit more about the project?
Yes, absolutely. I am Kelly, again, with Bancroft, located at 923 South Lowry. So the townhomes will be facing Washington, so all their front doors will face Washington to the west. They'll all have separate sidewalks that will connect to a new sidewalk that runs along Washington. Then the access to, I'm just going to see what Jackie has up here. So the access to the garages, which will face east, there'll be one entrance off of Eskridge on the north side, and so, she does have it there. So if you're looking at that site plan, so west is to the left of the screen, I guess, and north is to the top. You can see where we're going to come in off of Eskridge and access the driveways from the east side. The first floor will be a driveway, or a drive, a garage. Gosh, that totally left me. And then they'll have a living floor on the second floor. The third floor will be partial living room and then a rooftop patio. So that's the three levels that we're looking at. It will be gated off of Eskridge, and then that's pretty much it for the site. It is, let's see, 35 feet tall is the maximum in this zoning district. We're not asking for a variance to that. The school to the north is two stories, but I would be interested to see if that's a tall two-story, so it's probably going to be pretty similar in height, I would imagine. And then the owner's goal is to sell each unit individually, but we're still working through what that process looks like with city staff. The owner of this property is a local owner. He lives here in town, and the builder that he's chosen is a great builder with a great reputation that does really good developments. So high-quality construction, this project is going to look really good. I did speak with two ladies that attended Planning Commission after the meeting, after the Planning Commission meeting, that lived to the neighborhood to the west, was able to answer some of their questions, provided them email these files to them, the elevation drawings and the site plan. I believe they were going to put that up on their Facebook neighborhood page to let all the neighbors know. Any questions for me?
Kelly, I don't know if this is a question for you or for Jaclyn, but what are the landscaping requirements on a project like this? Trees, that kind of stuff.
I don't know.
There's not a lot of space for it, but.
It's going to be our general landscaping. We require 9% of all developed area, so whatever this develop calculates, they got to do 9% of equivalent for landscaping.
Okay. Thank you.
How big is each one of these units, square footage-wise?
I don't know the square footage. They're 25-foot wide. I don't recall the square footage offhand.
But I mean, these are, these are, look to be designed and built for someone to buy and live in. These are not, this isn't student housing that's going to be built to be rented out.
Correct, absolutely.
And it's a two-car garage on the back of each unit? It looks like in the drawings. It looks like they tried to smash two cars in there?
Yeah. With 25-foot wide, they could probably get two cars, yes.
Is there additional parking back in that driveway area, or, you know, where would visitors park?
It is wide enough to do parallel, yeah, parallel parking along the east side of that.
But this, I mean, basically the driveway in the building will take up the full lot.
Yes.
There's not going to be any room left for any other.
So these aren't party pads.
As far as you know. You can party anywhere.
They're going to Uber.
Councillors, further questions?
Thank you.
I don't have anyone else signed up for this item? Anyone else planning to speak? This time, I'll close the public hearing. Jaclyn, what was the Public, Planning Commission's recommendation on the SUP?
Planning Commission also recommended approval of four to zero on this item.
Thank you, Jaclyn. Councillors?
Motion to accept Planning Commission's recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote. That is approved with a vote of five to zero.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Takes us to General Orders. Item 8A, Presentation and Discussion of Residential and Commercial Utility Bills and Proposed Utility Rate Increases. Kristy Klug.
Good evening. Kristy Klug, Finance Director, and I am here to present some examples of bill impact to our customers as follow-up to the rate study presentations that you all have received the past few weeks. Before I get into the actual bill examples, I do want to provide just a brief recap of those rate study presentations, just as a reminder, since it's been a few days. And then finally, I want to point out that I do have, we do have a number of directors in the room that are here to assist me with answering your questions. So we received utility rate study presentations from the consultants. Electric and stormwater were presented on September 25th, and water and wastewater was presented on October 2nd. Staff did hold, along with council, we had some council participation, did hold town hall meetings with our customers and citizens on October 10th and October 12th. And then staff made a couple of presentations to some civic groups. They met with the Infrastructure Committee at the Stillwater Chamber on October 4th, and then the engineering group met with the Kewanas to do a presentation on water and wastewater rates. So the key drivers of the electric rate study were cost recovery, alignment of the rate structure with the cost of service, and then also modernizing the rate structure. The recommendations that came out of the electric rate study were to increase fixed charges to align with cost of service, eliminating the declining block rate billing structure, eliminating seasonal demand differential, aligning commercial class with peers and cost of service, and then finally to implement the new rates each January 1st, beginning in 2024 and continuing through 2028. It did come up in the presentations, the question on a history of our rate increases, and so I am providing that information to you all this evening. And here is a look at the electric rate history. For electric rates, this is all tied to the. For electric rates, this is all tied to the CPI escalator. And it was all across-the-board increases.
So the CPI escalator we had in place or have in place is up to 3% or what the actual CPI is for the year, correct?
Correct.
So in those years where it was 1.7, that was the actual consumer price index increase?
The key drivers of the water and wastewater rate study, it really boiled down to capital needs here. So the water capital improvements are estimated at about $491 million over the next 10 years. Wastewater capital improvements are estimated at $105 million over the next 10 years. And then we also concentrated on the cost to serve rural, wholesale, and raw water customers. So the recommendations that came out of the water wastewater rate study was to implement 3% retail, wholesale, and raw water rate increases effective January 1st of 2024. And then implement annual rate increases each July 1st, beginning in 2024 and continuing through 2028. And then finally, to implement a 1.5 times multiplier for outside city limits and rural water system customers. But I do want to point out that the 1.5 times multiplier is not included in the recommend, or in the rate structure that was presented. That is just a recommendation for future consideration by the council. And so here is a look at the water and wastewater rate history. And so what's different here about this compared to electric is these increases were tied to two different multi-year rate structure implementations. And so it's, the implementation of the rates was not in across-the-board percent. And so in an effort to kind of quantify that for you, what we did is we calculated an effective rate increase based on a 3/4 inch meter size and 5,000 gallons of usage.
So pretty big increases in 11, 12, and 13.
Yeah. In those early years, there was, we split the increases, or the increases occurred twice per year. So once in January, once in July.
But for a total of 17 for the whole year?
Yeah.
Were those related to Water 2040? What were those related to?
I know we did a cost of service study in 2009 and this was the result of that. I'm not sure that it was directly tied to Water 2040, but I do believe some of those projects were included and...
Bill has a comment?
I don't recall a lot of specific, Bill Millis, by the way, with engineering, it was not related to Water 2040. It preceded that by probably three years. I think it was probably more related to, we hadn't had a cost of service study on the water side in a lot of years before that. So I think it was mostly catching up.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
So the key drivers of the stormwater rate study were to further master plan studies, to address capital needs, to address MS4 program needs, address floodplain management needs, and then to also look at addressing existing operational needs. And the recommendations that came out of that study were to update the equivalent residential unit value of 5,000 square feet to 2,500 square feet, update the residential flat rate to $2.46 per month, and then update the commercial tiered rates per the consultant's recommendation. And then the rate history here is pretty simple. There's been no change to that fee since it was originally adopted in 1997. And then I wanted to just briefly provide a recap of the town hall meetings. We did have good participation, both in person and via Zoom. And so this is just kind of a little bit of a summary of the areas of questions. We got questions on time of use for, on our electric rates. Got several questions on the water capital improvement projects and what that really looks like. Several questions on energy conservation and water conservation and how our rates may promote that. How OSU is contributing to the stormwater program. What inflationary assumptions were used in those rate studies. And then also if rates are not approved, what does that mean for our water system in 10 years? So we got, we got a wide variety of questions on that. So now moving into the utility bill examples.
Kristi, I would just note for folks, if you weren't here for those public town hall meetings and you're interested in what the answers were to those questions, all of that stuff is available online, stillwaterok.gov/ratestudy. You can watch the YouTube videos of all those town hall meetings and the, all the other meetings too.
Yes, exactly.
That's absolutely correct, Mayor.
So the graphs that I'm going to show you in, in the utility bill examples, these are going to be the same graphs that were shown in the town hall. And I do want to reiterate that, that it is taking the consultant's recommendations and just applying that to different classes of customers with different consumption levels. So we'll start with residential and then move into our commercial customers and we'll end with a look at an industrial customer. And I'll walk you through this first slide because all of the charts are going to be laid out in the same manner. So kind of once you understand the layout here in this first one, you can just apply that to all future graphs. So this, at the top of this slide here, you'll find the customer class and the level of usage. So here we've got a residential low-usage customer. So that might represent a 600-square-foot home with one adult occupant. Under that, you'll see the level of consumption. So here we have electric consumption of 530 kilowatt-hours, water consumption of 3,500 gallons, and then 2,900 gallons for wastewater. The bars in the graph from left to right represent the implementation of the rate recommendation over the course of the five years. So we start with the current rates, the bill under the current rates, and then move to the right with the implementation of the recommendations. So each utility charge is shown in a different color on each bar. So from bottom to top, street sweeper is in dark blue. The garbage is in gray. Sales tax is in orange. Electric is in that peach or salmon color. Stormwater is in green. Sewer is in yellow. And then water is in that light blue. And then finally, the bill total can be found at the top of each bar. And then the percent change from prior year is right underneath that. So here on this residential low-usage customer, we see over the course of the five years, kind of a steady incline to their bill total. Then we have the residential average usage customer. Again, it's all laid out in the same manner. This might represent a 2,000-square-foot home with two adults and two young children. And so I want to point out on this slide, if you'll look at that first bar on the left-hand side, it's labeled as current blended. And that's because the electric rate recommendation was to eliminate the declining block rate structure for consumption. And that's something that only impacts the winter months. So we calculated a blended rate, just for comparative purposes, just so we can get as close to apples-to-apples as we can as we show the impact to the customer over the five years. So you'll see other slides that have that current blended label on that first bar. And just know that that is where we are eliminating that declining block rate structure for that customer. So here we have a residential high-usage customer. So this might represent a 2,300-square-foot home with two adults and two teenage children. And again, we see kind of the same trajectory on this residential customer, just that, that slow incline over the course of the five years. And here's a snapshot of a bill comparison. So this is, this is the actual bill that a customer might receive in the mail. We, we calculated the current bill. So you see the, in red, it says current there at the top for that bill on the left-hand side. And then we've calculated a comparative bill with the January 2024 increases. And this, so I'm going to zoom in here. And again, this is for the residential high user, high-usage customer. So on the amount due, we can see under the current bill, that's estimated at about $302.75. That January 2024 change results in a new bill total of $325.56. So that is a year-one bill impact of $24.27 for this customer. And I'm just showing the bill comparisons for the high-usage customers. So I'm going to point out something else here, just that will be handy whenever a customer is trying to calculate their own impact. Over here, there's a little asterisk with 3/4 inch meter. That's indicative of this customer having a 3/4 inch water meter, which determines their base charge for water and wastewater. And as the meter size increases, so does the fixed charge.
Now Kristi, the bill doesn't really say what size your meter is, right? You have to, you have to understand what the... Does it say it on there?
I think it just, I think it's...
You have to know what the rate is per meter size to know what size meter you have as a starting point, right?
I think it's in a different part of the bill.
Okay.
So this is a snippet of a part of the bill. So I think it's in another section of the bill.
I just know as I was looking at these, I had to know what the rate was to figure it out, so.
So moving into the commercial, we'll take a look at small commercial and then large commercial. So this is a small commercial low-usage customer that might represent a nail salon, a pawn shop, or a small auto body shop. And so here we see a fairly flat change to this customer's bill over the course of the five-year implementation. And then looking at the small commercial average usage customer, this might represent a hair salon, a dispensary, or small office spaces. And again, we see a relatively flat impact to this customer. And we're going to see that on the commercial customers. And so I want to explain the reason for that. If you look at the, kind of that peach-colored section right in the middle, that is our electric, that's the electric charges for this customer. So as part of the recommendation or the rate implementation, we are aligning, better aligning the rate structure for the commercial customers to better align with the cost to serve that class of customer. So the electric charges are actually coming down for the commercial customers. So here, what we're seeing is the offset to that is an increase in the water, mostly the water charges, a little bit on the wastewater side. And so their overall bill impact is relatively flat.
Just to, this is something that I've talked to a couple people about. And I think if you haven't spent as much time in this subject as most of us have, it can be a little difficult to understand that cost-of-service concept and why, you know, why wouldn't it cost the same to serve, you know, different classes of customers? So I don't know if you, well, I'm probably not the right one to try to explain that.
Yeah, I might defer.
If you want to just help, you know, I have had a couple of questions about like, why would it cost a different amount?
Good evening, Counselors. Lauren Smith, Electric Utility Director. That's a great question. And I think what it boils down to is it costs more to serve different classes. So it costs more to serve residential customers than it does say a industrial customer. And a lot of it has to do with volume. How many kilowatt-hours do you consume in a month? Whereas when you look at an industrial customer that consumes a lot of energy in a month versus a residential customer that uses considerably less. And it costs more to get the infrastructure to them and, and serve them.
Yeah, I was, the conversation I had, we were talking about how if you have one meter and they're consuming a ton of energy in a month versus my neighborhood, you know, with 40 or 50 meters and all the different infrastructure in that neighborhood, and still not consuming as much energy as that one industrial meter is consuming, it costs a lot more to maintain the infrastructure for that neighborhood than it does just to that one.
Correct. And if you look at our industrial customers, they're a mile or a mile and a half away from a substation and they're primary fed, right? So we, we feed them primary. They have all the infrastructure on their side of the meter to transform energy and all that. When you look at a residential customer, we might have a 10- or 15-mile line and you start adding up the poles and the wires and the transformers to serve. So, so it's a unique phenomenon that I actually learned this week after the question was asked to me. And I said, you know, that's a really good question. Everybody thought about that. So we're learning a little bit as we go on too.
Well, and historically, we've been, really, those commercial accounts have really been subsidizing the residential accounts because they've been paying more than it actually costs to serve them and residential customers.
Yes, absolutely. And our thought here is to, I don't know if you push the reset button to get everybody aligned in their class to where they're paying their cost to serve, wherever, where it's equitable across all customer classes, it made sense to us. And so over time, those have, those have strayed. And it's kind of, it would be a study in and of itself to see where some of these rates, especially this GS class, got out of line.
Well, the other thing that came up was this discussion of, well, when we add 400 new meters in a new subdivision south edge of town, if we're charging those residential folks less than what it actually costs to serve, there's a whole lot of infrastructure that's being built there and our charges aren't aligned with actually what the new costs of all that infrastructure is going to be. And so that's, you know, why we'd want these things aligned, not just to be fair, but because when we build a bunch of new residential meters or there's a new residential development, if we don't have these costs aligned, then we're increasing our costs and we're not increasing our revenue in line with all those new, new infrastructure we're building.
Yes, sir.
I mean, it makes sense once you kind of, you know, dive into it a little bit. So I appreciate you guys helping explain that.
You bet. Thank you very much.
So now I'll look at small commercial high-usage customer that might represent a small restaurant or cafe. And in this case, we're actually seeing, as we're implementing that rate structure, this customer's bill is projected to actually decrease over the course of the five years. And then here's that bill comparison of that small commercial high-usage customer. In year one, the bill impact is $79.67. So it does go up in year one, but then as we saw in that graph on the prior slide, it's projected to decrease after that. And moving into our large commercial customers, this is the low-usage customer. This might represent a mid-sized restaurant, a convenience store, or a retail store. And we're seeing again, kind of that same trend of a relatively flat bill impact over the course of the five-year implementation. And our large commercial average user, this might represent a car dealership or a larger restaurant. And again, very similar impact to the bill over the course of the five years. A little bit of an increase in year one and then a decrease in years two through four and then a slight increase in that final year. and then a slight increase in that final year. Then our large commercial customer, high-usage, so this might represent a big-box store, a large restaurant, or one of our public school locations. And again, kind of the same trend that we've seen with our other commercial customers with that initial increase in year one, and then relatively flat after that. And here's that bill comparison for a large commercial customer, high-usage. This customer has a two-inch meter, and their year-one bill impact is estimated at $481.66.
And I think, Kristi, if you'd go back, just one slide. I think the interesting thing about these slides, because you see after that first year, it doesn't go up, in fact, it comes down a little bit in subsequent years, it's easy to overlook because they're so small comparatively, but the water rates do continue to go up.
Yes.
It's the electric rates where the, the large commercial actually sees a decrease. And so I just think it's, it's interesting, given the perspective of those charts, that you, unless you look really close, you don't see their continual increases in water as well.
That, that is exactly right. So thanks for pointing that out. And then finally, here's just a look at an industrial customer. This tracks a little more like the residential customer in, in that we see kind of a steady increase over the course of the five years. And then before I jump to questions, I do want to show this tool that we have on our website, thanks to our IT department, where a residential customer can come in here and plug in their own consumption to get a bill estimate. So it's very easy to use. Again, it's at StillwaterOK.gov forward slash rate study. In the boxes here, we can simply plug in consumption for electric, we can pick our water meter size, we only offer three-quarter inch and one inch for this particular tool, but we can plug in our water consumption, and then our wastewater consumption, and then down at the bottom, just click the calculate button, and that does provide estimates over the course of the next five years based on your own personal usage history.
And thanks to the IT department, I think this is a fabulous tool, because I think everybody wants to put in their stuff and see how it affects their bill, so.
All right, and I'm happy to take questions and-
Councilors, questions?
So I've got a question that, that I asked Bill at one of the open, at one of the public meetings, and you might want to answer this bill. There's $600 million worth of capital built into the water and wastewater studies, and what happens if we don't approve this and accept those increases? What's the risk to the city?
It's a continued and increased risk of failure of the infrastructure. I mean, it's something that, kind of going back to the, the big increases in 2011 and '12 and '13, I think we realized at that point that we needed to turn around and start reinvesting in the water and wastewater systems and to bring them up to current standards, regenerate them, and replace them. And so it's kind of the same, the same idea now, that if we don't make these increases, that, that the risks of, of failures that, that interrupt service for our customers or where we can't, don't have pressure and can't provide service, those increase. The risk of them increases, you know, I can't predict how often that would happen or how, how big an outage it is, but we know the risk would increase if we don't make the, excuse me, the reinvestment.
And the single biggest risk that we face is?
Between the water plant and Call Lake.
Tell us more about that.
Sure, the, so our, our water source is, we have a single source, and it's Call Lake, 36 miles from the water treatment plant, and we have a pump station at Call Lake and a single pipeline. And so anytime you have basically a single point of failure, so even when your brand, brand-new pump station or brand-new water line, if that fails, and you don't have a backup or another, a redundant way to serve, you're out of service. So we have that pipeline, which is, and pump station, and treatment plant, which are now each 40 years old, 40-plus. So that's where the big risks are, that as they age, you just need to reinvest in them and bring them back up to snuff and keep them, take care of the things that deteriorate over time. We just recently replaced the cathodic protection system, so that's something that protects the integrity of the pipeline and keeps internal and external corrosion from eating away at the steel and rusting it away. So those are the kind of investments that we need to, to reestablish the resilience and the robustness of the system to set us up for the next 50 years so that we can, what we're trying to do with that program that, that you all have heard about a lot and, and some of our customers have, but maybe for those who haven't, we're trying to, to do the rehabilitation, but plan for the next 50 years to make sure that we have the, the system is set up to provide the, to be in the best condition we can, to provide the capacity, not only for now, but for future growth, and to provide resiliency, which in some cases means redundancy. Another, a backup system, if you're the only, the one system you depend on when it has a failure.
If we had a catastrophic, catastrophic failure of, of our current system with the Call Pipeline, we have a half-day or less of water stored, and then we have no water.
That's right. We have a 4-million-gallon raw-water storage tank at the water treatment plant. Our average use year-round is 7 million gallons a day, maybe over Christmas that drops to five, but still, so best case, less than a day of water storage in, here in Stillwater. During the summer, when we use 12 to 13 million gallons a day, you know, that's four to six hours.
So part of this rate increase is, is built-in money to expand our system, to have the Lake McMurtry be our backup water supply. We could draw from both sources if we wanted to, we can use Call to refill McMurtry. If we had, had shut down the whole pipeline for a month, we can live off McMurtry easily for a month.
Exactly, that's, yes, that's, if you look at it, a map of McMurtry kind of looks like it's, it's off to the side, but it is an integral part of our raw-water conveyance and water treatment system looking forward. Some, the same three things we mentioned before, it's a backup, it's a secondary supply because we have raw-water rights in, in Lake McMurtry. Now, it's not a replacement, it's not near the size of Call, but it's a supplement. And so it could help, it could serve us in the short term, in the winter, but it also supplements us and allows us to, one, be ready for an emergency on the Call line, but two, to do planned maintenance for the Call line. Right now, like we said, we can't take it down for a whole day, but once the Lake McMurtry backup system is in line, we could plan to maintenance, like you said, for up to a month, either to do, make improvements, do maintenance, do some of these resiliency measures, say at the river crossings. Right now, we, we could build a river crossing, but we couldn't tie it into the Call line because we don't have time. Once McMurtry's online, then we'll have time to do those kind of things. And even, we can't even evaluate, you know, the entire, the condition, the entirety of the alignment, because the kind of smart tools that go in there, you have to shut down the line, there's a lot of operations involved that would interrupt service for more than the time that we have allowed.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bill. So Kristi, if, obviously, we have about $19 million in grants toward the water projects in particular.
Yes.
And we're actively and aggressively trying to get more grant money, talk about what happens if we, or what could happen if we get a lot more grant money.
Yes, so included in the rate studies, we only included the known grants, so that the ones that we've actually received and, and, but we are actively pursuing grants. So if we were to receive especially anything of significant size, we would want to reevaluate the rate, the rate recommendations and any future increases to see if we could potentially halt those or, you know, possibly even reduce those.
Thank you, Kristi. I'll just remind everyone out there that there's, all this information is at Stillwater. You can see all of the meetings, you can, you can read all the reports if you're really, really, really interested and you want to read the rate studies themselves, they are quite detailed, and there's a ton of information in there. The, the estimator tool is out there. We are not taking action on this item tonight, still plenty of time. If you have comments or thoughts about those rate studies and those proposed rates, please let us know. We'll be looking at potential action at our first November meeting, correct?
Yes, correct.
Great, thank you, Kristi.
Thanks.
All right. Item 8B, consideration, discussion, and possible action to make a conditional offer of employment for the position of city manager. If you've been paying attention around here for the last few months, you know we've been conducting a city manager search since the retirement of Norman McNichol. We've had a subcommittee of the, of the council has worked through, I think, more than 50 applicants, looked at video and, and written answers from several sort of semifinal kind of applicants, and interviewed nine or 10 in person. And I am happy to say that we have made a verbal offer to a selected, our selected candidate, and she's indicated that she's interested in accepting that position. So our next step in this process will be for the council to take action to make a formal offer of employment, which will be conditioned on the pre, typical pre-employment matters and finalizing an employment agreement. And so I would like to make a motion to make a conditional offer of employment to Kimberly Meek, who is currently the city manager at the City of Duncan and has several years of experience as a city manager here in the state of Oklahoma, is also here with us this evening. Thank you for being here, Kimberly. I would like to make that motion for her, for her to be offered a conditional offer of employment for the position of city manager.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, that is approved, and so we will continue to work on a employment agreement with Ms. Meek. We will work on announcing a start date, we're still working on exactly when that'll be, and will take action to approve an actual finalized employment agreement at a future meeting. But we're excited to have Kimberly starting to get to know folks here in the Stillwater community over the next several weeks, and looking forward to having her step into the role of city manager here in Stillwater.
Would it be inappropriate to have her come up and say hello to the community?
I don't know if she's prepared to do that, but...
At least get her face on-
Sure she'll thank you for suggesting that.
At least get her face on camera.
That's a good idea, yes.
I didn't know that was on the agenda. So I'm Kimberly Meek, and I greatly appreciate the opportunity that you all have offered to me. I find Stillwater to be a very progressive, yet very hometown feel. I'm honored to serve the people, and I hope to continue the dedication that you have provided thus far, and I, I'm just really looking forward to this. I, I hope the negotiations to get here sooner happen. So if anybody has any questions, I'll, I'll answer anything. No? Okay.
We've already taken action, so you're out.
You're already taking action? Okay, well, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Let me, let me, before you get away.
Sure.
Something that impressed me during the interview was you spent a lot of time in Stillwater by design before you met with us.
I did.
And I, just, if you'd share a little bit about that, I think that would be great.
Sure. So I got a call that said, I didn't apply for the job originally when it was posted. So I got a call that said, are you interested in the position? And I said, I, I don't know, I don't really know that much about Stillwater, but I'll find out. And so I started making trips here, kind of under the radar, not telling anybody who I was or why I was doing it. And I stopped by your visitor's center and had a huge welcome, I said, I'm here for the weekend, they just started handing me things to do inside, outside, you want to do this, and recommending things, and it was pretty amazing. I stopped by your Chamber of Commerce, they said, here, do you need help with, you know, real estate, apartments, just all the things, hospital, all the things. And then I decided, you know, I'm going to go check out the municipality itself, I want to see, what is their culture like? How, how is it at the, you know, at the entry level where people are face-to-face, which is your utility customers coming in and paying their bills or turning on service? And so I came in and I said, hi, and they said, hello, and I said, I need to know how I get my utilities turned on. And they said, well, are you renting or buying? And I said, well, I don't know yet, is there a difference? And they said, well, yes, and then they told me the difference. And then I said, well, what if I want to start renting but then transfer to a house? And they said, this is how you do that. And without being asked, they then said to me, but if you plan to build, you're going to need to do an extra step, and that is to go to the planning department, which is up those stairs, and you need to go there first before you come back to us. And I said, thank you, and they pushed a piece of paper underneath and said, here's your application, you can complete that and return it to us either here or online, and gave me the deposit amounts, and asked if there was anything else they could help me with, and I said, no, thank you, and they bid me good day, and I walked out, and that, that is the moment that I decided that I did want to consider Stillwater as my, my new place of employment and my new home, because I realized that from top to bottom, the entire organization understood their priority was serving the citizens, and I believe that deep in my heart as well. My job is to serve.
Thank you for sharing that story.
You're welcome.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Looking forward to having you here full-time. I just want to say thank you to certainly the council, to our HR department. Kristi Driscoll has done a ton of work, Kimberly Carnley has also served in helping with the selection process, and this has been a, a long process, and we're, we're excited with the outcome and looking forward to moving forward there, but, but thanks to everyone who's, who's played a part in getting us to where we are.
And we should also thank our interim city manager for the outstanding job he has done bridging us through this gap.
He's done a fantastic job as the interim city manager, and look forward to Brady continuing on in, in a role as assistant or, or wherever, wherever that ends up being. But yes, thank you, Brady, for your services in the interim, and we'll, we'll need you to stick around for a little while longer until, in that role, until Ms. Meek can get here full-time. So. All right, that takes us to item nine on the agenda, which is resolutions. 9A, Resolution CC-2023-36, a resolution of the Stillwater City Council as a recipient of financial assistance from the Oklahoma Department of Commerce for a fiscal year 23 Community Development Block Grant, 19168 CDBG 23, adopting a Section 3 annual plan directed at increasing utilization of lower-income residents and businesses within the CDBG project site. Shelley, do you have anything particularly you need to add to this? This is related to making sure our CDBG funds are spent according to regulations?
I have to go first.
Yes. Questions, comments, or motion on the resolution?
I move to adopt Resolution CC-2023-36.
Second.
Motion of the second to adopt the resolution, please vote. With a vote of five to zero, that resolution is adopted. 9B, Resolution CC-2023-37, a resolution declaring that firearms owned by the City of Stillwater Police Department are surplus property and authorizing and approving the trade-in of said firearms for a credit to be applied to the purchase of new firearms. Chief Watts, anything you want to add to this one? We're not just selling those surplus firearms out on the street, right?
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. All of these firearms are current police-issued firearms, and we're just upgrading to new firearms, so they're not seized weapons, they're our issued weapons, so sometimes-
And they get traded back into the-
They get traded back into a reputable dealer to dispose of them, however, and then we get credit for new firearms so that we don't have to come back next year and ask the council for funding to purchase those firearms.
Excellent.
Something that I had not thought of in the past and noted here is that, that not all of our officers carry exactly the same weapon, and, and by trading these in and buying new, they'll, but will at least have a starting point where they're all using the same weapon.
Yes, we'll be all same weapon, same holster- Yes, we'll be all same weapon, same holster, same light system, same everything. Yes, sir.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Counselors.
Motion to adopt Resolution Number CC-2023-37.
A motion and a second. Please vote. Resolutions adopted, five oh. Item 9C, Resolution CC-2023-38, a resolution authorizing the assignment of the Stillwater Regional Airport Building Lease Agreement between the City of Stillwater and Stillwater Aircraft Services, Inc., to the Stillwater Flight Center, Inc., and authorizing the city manager to sign related documents necessary for such purpose. I think Kelly gave us a good explanation of this earlier on the item removed from consent. Any further questions or action on the resolution?
Motion to adopt Resolution Number CC-2023-38.
Second.
A motion and a second. Please vote. Resolutions adopted, five zero. Item 10 is ordinances. On first read, we have ordinance 3527, an ordinance rezoning attractive land located at 716 West 11th Avenue from small lot, single-family residential to two-family and multifamily district. This is from a prior meeting.
Motion to advance ordinance number 3527 to second read.
Second.
A motion and a second to advance the ordinance. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, that ordinance is, excuse me, that ordinance is advanced to second reading. Item B is ordinance 3528, an ordinance rezoning attractive land located at 847 West Eskridge Avenue from small lot, single-family residential district to two-family residential district. This is from earlier this evening. Counselors.
Move to advance ordinance 3528.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to advance the ordinance. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, that ordinance is advanced to second reading. On second reading, we have ordinance 3526, an ordinance amending the Stillwater City Code by amending Chapter 23 Land Development Code, Article 6 Land Use Classifications, Division 1 Generally, Section 23-121 Exemptions, Setbacks for Fences, Etc., Projections Into the Yards, Repealing All Ordinances to the Contrary, and Providing for Severability. Counselors.
Motion to adopt ordinance number 3526.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, ordinance 3526 is adopted. Reports from officers and board. Ms. Carnley.
Yes, I have a request this evening on items A, 1, 2, and 3 for executive sessions pursuant to 25OS Section 307B4 involving confidential communication between the city council and the city attorney concerning the following pending claims or actions. Pending claim or action involving Jolino CCC LLC, pending claim or action involving Silverton Estates LLC, and three, pending claim or action involving Greg Hoskins Doing Business as UBC Precast. It is the opinion of the city attorney that disclosure of this matter will seriously impair the ability of the city council to process these claims or conduct litigation in the public interest.
Thank you. Mr. Moore.
Yes, the Stillwater Police Department is reminding us to lock it. Unfortunately, we've had an increase in auto burglary reports over the last month and as well as stolen vehicles in Stillwater. The department staff shared that most of the reported auto burglaries in those burglaries, victims have left their vehicles unlocked with their wallets, purses, or keys inside. This has happened to me last year, so got to remember to lock that car. A few helpful reminders for all of us. Lock your vehicles. Remove all valuables from our cars. Do not leave keys in the vehicle. Park in well-lit areas if possible. Leave the porch or yard lights on and call 911 if you see anything suspicious. You can also call 405-372-4171 if you need to make a report.
It's unfortunate that we have to make announcements like that, but it is something that happens from time to time. Vice Mayor.
Yes, mark your calendars for upcoming free holiday fun. On October 24th will be Downtown Stillwater's Halloween Festival from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. on Main Street from 7th to 10th Avenues. Come dressed up in your most creative costumes for a fun family event that includes trick-or-treating, costume contests, games, face painting, and more. And also, on October 30th, Stillwater Medical Center will have a drive-through trick-or-treat from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the Stillwater Medical Plaza located on 12th and Adams. The team is looking forward to providing a safe trick-or-treat experience for our area kids.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. It's also probably a good time, I get this question every year, Stillwater does not do any kind of special trick-or-treating night. If there's going to be trick-or-treating in your neighborhood, it happens on Halloween. These special events are a lot of fun, but you will also see trick-or-treaters out on the 31st. So keep your eyes open for trick-or-treaters around the area. Counselor Hawkins.
Staying with the Halloween theme, please save the dates for the Stillwater Haunted Library on Thursday, October 19th through Saturday, October 21st from 5:30 to 7:30 p.m. and 8:00 to 10:00 p.m. There will be carnival games, thrills, and chill stories, no-scare mini-maze for younger children, and refreshments. This is a fundraiser for the library, so the cost is $5 for attendees who are 12-years and younger, and $10 for those 13 and older. Advanced reservations are required. Go to stillwaterok.gov/library for more information or call 405-372-3633.
Thank you very much. Counselor Clark.
We have many fun events coming up for America's Greatest Homecoming. The walk-around will be Friday, October 27th with road closures beginning at 5:00 p.m. Parade will be at Saturday, October 28th downtown on Main Street. The time will be announced soon, depending on when the game starts, I presume.
It's at 9:00.
Oh, there you go.
Parade's at 9:00 a.m.
Parade's at 9:00. Don't forget, if you're going to the football game, take advantage of the free parking ride and shuttle service downtown. Passengers will be picked up at the 7th Avenue and Lewis Bus Stop. Shuttles begin running three hours before kickoff and continue to run every 30 minutes throughout post-game. We're very appreciative of the countless hours that emergency management, police, fire, public works, and many others have already invested to mitigate the potential safety risks. For information regarding safety measures, maps, food vendor details, and more, go to stillwaterok.gov/2023HOCO, or if you prefer, 2023HOCO. Also, please utilize, visit stillwater.org website for this event and many more. They always provide a great amount of helpful information.
Yes, sorry for interrupting, but it is, I always, the Monday, you know, they don't announce football game times until two weeks before the game, which is the dumbest thing in the world, but it's TV money. They did announce that the game is at 7:00 p.m. Perfect on homecoming, which is fantastic. The problem, sometimes if they give us an 11:00 a.m. game, we have to do the parade early. No early parade this year, 9:00 a.m. parade downtown and the 7:00 p.m. game time, so you'll have lots of time for your homecoming festivities on Saturday. Thank you for that. Counselor Harden.
Yeah, after talking about Halloween, now we're going to talk about cold weather. Possible severe winter weather is just around the corner. Be sure to have multiple ways to receive warnings and alerts to help protect your family. Follow the City of Stillwater Emergency Management, that's S-T-W-S-E-M-A, on Facebook or Twitter for important updates and information. Director Rob Hill and his team continuously monitor the weather and remain in communication with the National Weather Service at our Norman. Their social media pages are an additional reliable source for the latest weather. And there are times I've seen him driving around town talking about the road conditions. He's a hoot.
Stillwater's highest-rated TV show.
That was not in my reading.
Related to that, I received a notification earlier today that we have a frost advisory for tonight, so get those plants in off the patio.
Thank you for that. I will let you know that on Saturday, October 21st, the city's Watershed Quality Department will have its bi-annual Household Hazardous Waste Collection Event. The event will be from 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at the Convenience Collection Center located at 807 South Perkins Road. During this event, residents are encouraged to drop off any household pollutants for free. Accepted items include oil-based paints, pesticides, herbicides, household cleaning products, pool chemicals, unused pharmaceuticals, and more. The Convenience Collection Center will still accept regular trash and recycling that day, however trailers and commercial waste are not allowed. Yard waste will be accepted after 1:00 p.m. This event is for residents and a utility bill may be requested as proof. For a full list of acceptable items, go to stillwaterok.gov or call 405-533-8458. All right, at this time, I will move that we recess the city council meeting before item 13.
Second.
A motion and a second to recess the city council. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, the Stillwater City Council will now be in recess, but at this time, I will call to order the Stillwater Economic Development Authority meeting for October 16th. Trustees on the consent docket. Action on the consent docket?
Motion to approve, sorry, motion to approve the consent docket.
Second. A motion and a second on consent. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, the consent docket is approved. And the only item on this agenda is a Chamber of Commerce Quarterly Economic Development Report from Reagan Mitchell.
How are you all today?
We're great.
I took the feedback from last time and I'm going to stay really far away from the mic because my voice does tend to carry. And so again, hello from the Stillwater Chamber of Commerce Economic Development. This is the quarter for 2023 Economic Development Report. Again, thank you so much for your investment in the Stillwater Chamber and your trust in us to conduct the work in elements of economic development on behalf of the City of Stillwater. Here is a condensed report that gives you kind of an aerial view of what we've been up to over the last quarter. So big highlights on the state side. To be specific, we submitted on Project Alpha 24. This project represents roughly 150 jobs above the tax base and 360,000 square-foot manufacturing facilities. So they are interested specifically in the Armstrong facility without revealing too much about the nature of the project. This is a development that is in line with other green energy developments that are happening in the manufacturing sphere in Stillwater, so this is very exciting. Another lead more recently was generated on the Armstrong facility through a connection that was made at Select Oklahoma, which I'll tell you guys a little bit about later in my report. This is not yet an official state project, so I can't give you the information that I gave you about Alpha 24, but people are very specifically interested in the Armstrong facility. One of the projects that I told you about in my last report, Project Infinite String, was lost by the state of Oklahoma. So not just the consideration of Stillwater, but Oklahoma as a state in total. And then, as I mentioned a little bit ago, the chamber was represented at Select Oklahoma on a panel discussing the value of a regional approach to economic development. So these are photos to prove that it really happened. We really were included on this panel, which is, like I said, an exciting thing for multiple reasons. Gets Stillwater front of house when we're considering the reach economic development-wise of the greater Oklahoma City region. And then also it generated a lead for a project that's interested in occupying the Armstrong facility. So to me, that is an example of how these outreach and networking events really are a good use of time and resources when we're looking at Select Oklahoma as a benefit to the economic development goals of Stillwater. Big highlights on the state side continued. I mentioned this to you all last quarter, but we were selected to participate in the Oklahoma Targeted Opportunity Program through the Department of Commerce. This is a grant program that gives rural communities the ability to work with a large site selection group to evaluate what they call mega sites, so anything 100 acres or over, for potential use and development. So we worked with the site selection group that is based out of Dallas, Texas, and it has offices in Greenville, South Carolina. This program, which is super wonderful, is fully reimbursed by the Department of Commerce. And at the end of the program, they provide you kind of like a data-driven, stats-driven, facts-driven advisement about updates that need to be made to infrastructure to best leverage that land for business recruitment. So that site visit was conducted August 14th through August 15th. A preliminary report was given to a team of individuals that met with the site selection group on August 14th and 15th with a final report coming later this month. And so, as I said, the improvements related to infrastructure to make sure that that site can be used, this is acreage west of the airport. They're making advisements on infrastructure improvement, improvements or additions, excuse me, recommendations for industries or sectors to target based on what Stillwater's current focus is and what the current use of the land is, as well as phased improvements. So theoretically, like if you were to invest $5 million in water, or $5 million in electric, or $5 million in roads, here are the kind of projects that you could get or that you could go for. And if you didn't make any of those improvements, here's what that land could hypothetically be used for. So that's useful in a couple ways, because it doesn't put us in a position where we have to make some large grandiose investment for the land to be usable. It's a phased development plan, which is really helpful. And then also, which is the reason that we ended up working with them over the other groups that we interviewed, they make recommendations based on workforce. So the workforce that we have present through State Career Tech, Meridian Technology Center, NOC, and OSU, they factor all of those things in when they're making recommendations about the kind of developments that we could support with our current workforce. So we should expect that final report at the end of this month, with the final report being given on October 4th. Big highlights on the BRE side. The hub has selected Lambert Construction as the GC or GM for the building of the Stillwater location, so that is very exciting. A local general contractor being selected to manage that project. I mentioned this to you all the last time I was in front of you, but it was more preliminary and now it's actually happening. The Stillwater Chamber, Meridian Technology Center's Business Development Incubator, and the Small Business Development Center at the West Watkins Center for International Trade have put together a series of small business programs to benefit our small business community. So this is a 12-week, six-session program that goes through different elements related to owning a small business, starting with marketing ideation and target market definition, ranging from financials to legal strategies. We've engaged a lot of different partners and we're excited about the resource that this is going to be to our small business community. The program officially kicked off on September 19th of 2023. In total, the program had 24 registrants and today has 15 total participants with over 10 businesses represented in total through those registrants. So the work of this program is really developing a business plan with the end goal being that those that are kind of in that startup phase or even existing but kind of going into a new echelon of their small business owning will be able to compete for a portion of funding that is designated for startup through the chambers. It used to be called Preferred Membership. We've now rebranded it to Signature Membership. So that Signature Membership, $100 that members can tack on to their membership is divided equitably into four pots, one of them being startup. And so those dollars then will be invested back into the business that proves at the end to have the most well-vetted business plan. We've engaged Simmons Bank, Corey Williams with Look Properties, Jonathan Udoka with Udoka Law to teach the elements of this program that me and Maggie Pumaninski, our membership development director, are not equipped to teach. We've engaged Chamber membership and so we see this as a really valuable and necessary use of our time in the world of PR and small business development. Lastly, well, actually, on the BRE side, Elaine sent me this graphic, and I hesitate to take any credit for this because this is Elaine and Grace Welch's brain baby through and through, but did have pretty significant economic development implications for Stillwater. The Purchase on Perkins program, which I mentioned to you all in the larger documents submitted, in total, the Purchase on Perkins program generated over $320,000 of revenue for the businesses located along the Perkins Road corridor. There were 1,000 or 13,221 total entries, 32 chamber businesses represented, 78 non-chamber businesses represented, and 367 total participants. So just as a reminder, that program was designed in response to the pain points that Elaine was hearing on her 100 visits in 100 days from the businesses that existed along Perkins Road during the ODOC construction. And so we are very proud of the results of that program and, as is evidenced by the numbers, that was a fruitful investment of our time and our energy in order to show support to the businesses located in that Perkins Road corridor. And then lastly, on my side, big highlights, website and Grow Stillwater, which is one of the deliverables outlined in this year's contract, is the redesign and remarket of all economic development, slick sheet materials, and then also websites. And so I showed you all kind of a preliminary design. That website design has changed pretty drastically after presenting it to the Economic Development Committee and a couple key stakeholders. This is still not the final design, but the hope and the projection is to have this done by the end of this year for your review before publishing. So let me see, it's given me the... Okay, and again, this is very preliminary, but I wanted to show you how it's changed for your review. So again, that's drone footage of Stillwater that's replaced Niceville USA stock footage, which is really nice. We'll work on getting more drone footage. I'll work with Rob Hill with... I'll work with Rob Hill with SEMA on that to get more drone footage of developing areas downtown. We've reduced or condensed the headings. And then most significantly, we're really leaning in to grow in Stillwater as a brand for Stillwater Economic Development. So there are other economic development agencies that are using that same strategy, Tulsa's Future being one of them. That's the example that comes to mind, top of mind. Instead of it being Tulsa Chamber and then an arm of that Tulsa Chamber being Economic Development, Tulsa's Future is a branded entity of the Tulsa Chamber that functions as the economic development arm, if that makes sense. And so for all intents and purposes, Grow in Stillwater would be kind of the economic development brand of the Stillwater Chamber. So it would be endorsed. So let me scroll through this in a way that makes more sense. So Grow in Stillwater, kind of vision casting about what Stillwater has to offer as a community potential for business development with a Learn More tab that will bring them to like the Business Resources page. Featured news, so press releases, things that have to do with economic development, infrastructure development, things that show that Stillwater's growing and progressive. A highlight of the largest employers with pull quotes about what their experience as a business owner has been like in Stillwater business owner or operator. More prompts to contact us. Statistics about the city, replacing what was our social media because that just didn't seem super relevant on an economic development site to have the chambers. Social media, that was feedback from the Economic Development Committee. A short page that will lead to the available properties widget, incentives that are available at the discretion of City Council, not promised by me, but at the discretion of City Council, listed for people that are looking into that. More of a highlight about our community in total. And then this will be redesigned, but a map that shows our central location in the nation. But we really want to lean into marketing Stillwater as a central hub for Northwest Oklahoma. So not just looking at Stillwater as central to the nation, but really as a convergence point between two major metropolitan areas with lower cost of operation, but the same access to trained and educated workforce. So we really want to lean into that regional branding for Stillwater. And part of that conviction is us being a part of a regional partnership with Oklahoma City and empowered by the Stillwater Chamber of Commerce. So rather than it being, the Stillwater Chamber of Commerce's economic development website, it will be its own existing brand with fusions between the current brand, the transitional brand identity guide of the City of Stillwater and then the existing brand identity guide of the Stillwater Chamber. Questions?
I think the tweaks to the website are really good. I really like kind of the direction that you're going there.
Thank you.
Kind of building that brand for economic development. I've seen that be very effective across the country and communities that I've worked with as well. So I think that's really cool. I like, like what you're doing there. And of course, we always appreciate the work that you all do in representing us in this aspect of community development and growth. And I'm excited always to hear your updates and things that are happening.
Yeah. Happy to see you guys getting out and participating in some of those events and getting to know some of those folks. I mean, I'm really excited to see that report on the west side of the airport. You know, there's a lot of opportunity out there and glad to hear we're seeing some interest in Armstrong. You know, I generally like to ask when you all are here for this purpose if there's anything pressing that you feel like the city can do to help, you know, win any of these over. But I know, you know, there's a ton of factors that go into those things. I'm not sure. I think you're getting all the help you need from our utilities folks when those things come in.
Absolutely. Yeah, I cannot say enough about Stillwater Utilities Authority and City Management. You are, yeah, you all are the best team that I could hope to work with. So thank you for, for all of your help and for your quickness to help me respond to those R F P projects. And, you know, just for your record, we respond to everything that feels relevant to the community of Stillwater. And I think with the airport study and with us looking at Commerce Place on Perkins as an area for development, we really just want to be intentional to make sure that we're targeting the kind of industry and businesses that we could reasonably support. So we're trying to be to the best of our ability, good stewards of the projects that are coming through the Commerce pipeline, so.
All right. Thank you, Reagan.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thanks for being here.
Absolutely.
All right. There is nothing further on the Stillwater Economic Development Authority Agenda if there are no announcements from the officers of the board. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Salute.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn Seda. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, the Stillwater Economic Development Authority is now adjourned. At this time, I will call to order the Stillwater Utilities Authority Meeting for October 16th, 2023. Trustees, action on the consent docket.
Motion to approve the consent docket.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve consent. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, the consent docket is approved. On this agenda, we have Presentation of Federal Advocacy Services and Annual Report by MMO Partners, and John McClain will get this introduced for us.
Good evening, John McClain, Procurement Manager. In October of 2022, the Council entered into an agreement with MMO Partners to provide federal advocacy services primarily related to water infrastructure. And one of the deliverables on that contract is for them to provide you with an annual report. And Kyriakos Pagonis and Chuck Thomas with MMO Partners are here tonight to provide that report. Get this pulled up for you.
It'll pop up there in a second.
I guess it's Mr. Chairman, Mayor, Council Members, Trustees. Thank you for the opportunity to be here before you tonight. My name is Kyriakos Pagonis. I'm Vice President, MMO Partners. I want to first, again, thank you for the opportunity to be here, but most importantly, thank you for giving us the opportunity to represent the city in Washington, D.C. I want to commend you all for having the vision and thoughtfulness of looking proactively at federal funding. We heard earlier tonight some of your infrastructure needs and have certainly been working with staff over the past year to try to align those needs with federal funding sources. So I just wanted to say a lot of commendation to you for really thinking ahead and proactively at looking at ways to leverage, you know, taxpayer money, ratepayer money to secure federal funding. So what I want to do tonight is give you a little bit of background about our firm and then go into some of the work that we've been doing on behalf of the city over the past year and then talk about some of the work we'll be doing to finish out this year and then calendar year 2024. With me tonight is Chuck Thomas. Chuck is a Senior Technical Advisor at MMO Partners and he'll be walking through some of this presentation with me this evening. But a little bit of background about MMO Partners, we've been representing primarily local governments in Washington, D.C. for over 40 years. So if you're wondering, I've been with the firm for about 20 years. I started when I was about 10. So, but in all seriousness, our clients are local governments, cities, counties, water authorities, special purpose districts, ports. I'm happy to say and proud to say that our average client retention rate is about 25 years. Our initial three clients who started with the firm in the early 80s are still clients today. And I think part of the reason, I know part of the reason for the success is our experience, but more importantly, I think it's our approach. We look at this work from a nonpartisan perspective, working with each of our clients to really develop and frame a federal program that aligns with their community's interests and the opportunities in Washington and really approach this from a very technical and nonpartisan way. Obviously, we work in a political climate, so I'm not sort of naive to think that there is no politics involved. But from our standpoint, we work with members on both sides of the aisle to really deliver results on behalf of our clients. Closer. Sorry about that. So again, we look at ROI as sort of the way we look at our approach and making sure that the money you all invest, your taxpayers and ratepayers invest, is a return on investment for you all. And I'll ask Chuck to come up and do the program highlights for 2023.
Mr. Chairman, Trustees, thanks for the opportunity to present. Ms. Kyriakos, I mentioned, my name is Chuck Thomas. I'm a Senior Technical Advisor with MMO. Prior to joining MMO, I worked for about 30 years at bearing levels of public agencies from state to local to municipality, generally with an engineering technical frame. I've worked with drinking water systems, wastewater systems, flood control, and kind of everything in between in that, in that general realm. I am a registered professional engineer for about 27 years now, continuing to keep my registration up. So I'm helping provide some technical kind of insight into a lot of the projects as we move forward on this. Just to give an update on what we've done to date with Stillwater. So the first thing was hosting a federal workshop to identify project needs and scopes. Obviously, when we're coming in, we want to find out exactly what it is that you have going in and what your needs are so that we can help frame which federal funding sources are a best fit for those projects. And that's not only from a technical perspective with regards to the federal funding source itself, but also the financial aspects of those programs and the match requirements, et cetera. So we try to match all of that up. We did produce a federal funding report, which identified roughly eight opportunities, broken up between several agencies, including FEMA, Federal Emergency Management Agency, Federal Highway Association, Environmental Protection Agency, the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, and U.S. Department of Ag with the NRCS program. And then down below that, of course, we have the Bureau of Reclamation in there as well. So through those programs, there are multiple funding opportunities. So with FEMA, you have the Building Resilient Infrastructure in Communities, which we'll talk about a little bit later, as well as the Flood Mitigation, Flood Mitigation Authority. Through the Army Corps of Engineers, there's the Environmental Infrastructure Program. Bureau of Rec has Small Storage Water Energy and Efficiency Grant Programs. Of course, the Clean Water S R F and the Drinking Water S R F, you're fairly familiar with, already having used those. There's some new programs, the STORM, which is a revolving loan program for stormwater utilities and stormwater actions, and then W F I A, which is the large federal loan program that recently came about with EPA. And then, of course, there's member-directed spending requests through Washington, D.C. that we introduced as well. So one of the first things that we wanted to do was develop the Regional Water Brochure. So one, in our experience, when you're dealing with the congressional delegations or other entities, when you're introducing yourself to new federal agencies, it's important to be able to give them an ability to see a lot of information very quickly and a quick visual so they have an understanding of exactly what it is that's going on. And we found that brochure concept to be very successful with other, with other clients. So we worked very closely with your staff to get that developed and put together for use as well. And I'd like to just kind of commend the staff for, for work on that and the rest of the program as well. It's been very, they've been very responsive and have gotten us tons of information very quickly. So just wanted to drop some kudos for your staff on that perspective. Once we got those elements in place, then we started scheduling federal agencies and congressional meetings, both in-person and virtual, depending on which was most accommodating. We did set up meetings with EPA, U.S. Department of Ag, Bureau of Reclamation, FEMA Corps of Engineers, and of course, members and staff with Senator Mullen, Senator Langford, and Congressman Lucas. So we're able to establish a presence with all those entities and with the members of Congress there. As part of funding opportunities, we did work with city staff to develop a technical assistance application for BRIC. So as a new program under the FEMA BRIC funding opportunity is a directed technical assistance program where FEMA will come in and provide up to three years of assistance, basically guiding a community through an application process for funding through the BRIC program. So it's a fairly competitive process and it's, it's exciting that Stillwater was one of 46 communities that was selected, the only local government in Oklahoma that was selected for this program. And so we've been moving forward that. I think we've had a couple, three meetings now under that program. And of course, today was a great brainstorming session identifying all the needs and moving that forward. So that's, that's very exciting from that perspective. We did submit, working with staff, a FY24 congressionally-directed spending request. $1 million has been included in the House FY24 Interior Bill by Representative Lucas. And as that moves forward, obviously, that hasn't been approved yet, still moving through that process. So those things do kind of work their way through. And most recently, within the past two weeks, there was a $30 million funding request submitted to Senator Mullen's office through the W R D A Authorization Request. And I'm trying to keep the acronyms to a minimum here, but it's the Water Resource Development Act, and that's the primary capital funding tool with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. The great thing about that funding, particularly the Environmental Infrastructure Program, is that the funding has a very broad application, so it can go towards drinking water components, which is the primary focus here. But you can also look at wastewater, as well as water resource and flood control, all under the same umbrella with the program. So it's a very flexible, kind of powerful program to work with from that perspective. So that's kind of where we are to date. And I think I will turn it back over to Kyriakos to discuss kind of what the next steps are moving forward for the upcoming year.
Thanks, Chuck. So that was a brief highlight overview of what we've been working on. Some of those successes, especially, you know, the BRIC TA selection, the million-dollar congressionally-directed spending, and then being able to submit the W R D A Authorization, were really a team effort. So these are not MMO successes. This is the City of Stillwater's program. And it would not have happened without the direct involvement of the mayor and council's direction. The mayor took time and came to D.C. to advocate personally on these issues and projects, your staff. And I'll say, you know, we've, you work with cities, large and small, and, you know, in some places, there is no base of support. And we were fortunate to come here and you all have a great staff already in place and really helped us hit the ground running. So I can't say, and Chuck said it earlier, how fortunate we are to have that partnership. And obviously, your congressional delegation, you know, for supporting these efforts. So going forward in 2023, we still have a few months left, but Chuck did mention the appropriations process. So as you all, I'm sure, are following the news, we're in a continuing resolution until mid-November. Hopefully, Congress will be able to come to an agreement by then. My guess is not. And so I expect that we'll be here in December, hopefully, you know, with a final product before Christmas. Fingers crossed and, you know, hopefully that, that happens. So we won't know the, the outcome of your earmark until that process is wrapped up, but hopefully, again, before the end of the year. We'll continue to work with the city and FEMA on this BRIC technical assistance process. We had a meeting today. We're scheduled to meet every two weeks and your staff. We've been part of these conversations and will continue to be. Again, the, the hope is at the end of this process, you know, they will help us develop a proposal, a funding proposal that then is submitted to FEMA for national competition. And the BRIC program does allow for funding up to 50 million for infrastructure projects that do reduce communities', you know, impact from, from disasters. And we've, we're off to a good start. We did have Senator Mullen's staff as State Director visit the site today. So we continue to move forward and it's, and I think it's really important that you all, you know, continue to be involved. Obviously, the staff and us can, can talk to folks, but we don't sit up there, you do. And I think having, you know, elected officials and federal decision makers here directly from, from you all is critical to this process. And so I appreciate the time that you all have put forth so far and hopefully we can continue to have those in-person conversations. Finalizing the FY24, I just mentioned- Finalizing the FY24 I just mentioned, hopefully by the end of the year. We will then, you know, quickly move into FY25 and then look with, and work with your staff to develop a list of potential requests for the delegation to consider for FY25. That process is usually in the first quarter of 2024 with, you know, submissions probably due by the end of March or mid-April. Again, we've worked with your staff to develop the paperwork and support letters, et cetera, for, for that process to be complete. We'll continue to work with the delegation and the city and the Corps to get this WORDA Authorization included in the next WORDA bill. And that process will, it started already because we have met a deadline. The House will also follow suit and probably in the first quarter of 2024 will ask for the same type of request. We'll probably get a bill hopefully introduced in that first quarter and then hopefully by the end of the year, they, they pass something. The WORDA process is, is typically a bipartisan process, so it's usually not controversial. They have been able to do them every two years and they have been pretty consistent. So hopefully, that continues to, to work. I will say about the authorization process, it's a two-step process. So one is, is first getting the authority or giving the Corps the authority to work with you all. Once we get that authority, then we'll have to go back to Congress and ask for funding for, for projects that align with the authority. So just to be clear about that, this is not funding, it's a, it's an authorization to then get funding to do, to do the work. We'll continue to work with your staff and, and you all on continuing to monitor grant opportunities. As we said, I think the city has done a great job and has certainly thought through in terms of having a grants office and, and probably can be bolstered. But I think we'll continue to work on finding opportunities throughout the year to match. Again, our, our mission is, has been really the, the water, the drinking water project, but that doesn't mean we, we don't look for other things that we think are important to the city and align with projects that we learn about. Obviously, your economic development, there are certainly opportunities there. And so we'll just look forward to working with you all on, on finding those. And I, and we'll take any questions.
Trustees, any questions?
You sat through a really long meeting today, but you probably, it was a good one for you all to attend. You probably learned a lot about us today. So thank you for your patience and of course, for all the work that you're doing as we try to steward the funds that we have and bring more tax dollars back to benefit our community. It's really helpful to have your expertise to work with us to do that. We're really appreciative of all of those things.
Thank you.
I'll just comment, the work that you're doing is sort of what I alluded to a while ago, right? As we get more and more grants in here to fund some of these projects, we won't have to implement as much of the rate increase perhaps. Or maybe we'll leave it in place so we can accelerate things, but eventually, that's going to start falling off on the backside. So this is critically important and thank you for being here today.
Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I'll just add, I've probably worked with you guys directly the most and, and I've been very appreciative of, of the direction, right? I mean, I think with a lot of this stuff, you know, we, we know about grants, we, we find these things or we see these things, our, our staff does a fantastic job with, with pulling that stuff forward. But, you know, being able to go and have these conversations with our congressional delegation in a much more directed way, you know, hey, this is what this program is concerned about, this is what we need to focus on, helping us put those, those materials together and, and really, you know, there's a, it's an incredibly complicated system of the, the way federal money gets dispersed and, you know, I mean, just you explaining the, the WORDA process where we've got to get the authorization to work with the Corps and then maybe you go get money and the BRIC process where we're getting, you know, the technical assistance, which then allows us to, to make the application for, for the grants. You know, it's, it's complicated and it's, you know, as much as we wish it weren't and as much as we wish this system worked a little bit more clearly, this is the reality of the situation and you guys have been a great guide in, in helping us do that. And I, I think, as Counselor Clark said, it's, it's vitally important for us to get these dollars back in our community because we have a lot of money that needs to be spent. And I would rather that tax dollar I already gave the government comes back to me instead of having to give that tax dollar again in the, in the form of a rate increase. And so again, yeah, just appreciate your work and look forward to, to turning some of this work into, to checks. So appreciate you being here.
Thank you all. Appreciate the opportunity.
All right. Nothing further on the SUA agenda. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
With a motion and a second to adjourn SUA, please vote. With a vote of five to zero, the Stillwater Utilities Authority is now adjourned. At this time, I will reconvene the Stillwater City Council meeting at item thirteen on the agenda. Is there a motion to enter an executive session for the reasons requested by the city attorney?
Motion. Second.
With a motion and a second to enter executive session, please vote. With a vote of five to zero, the Stillwater City Council will now convene an executive All right. Is there a motion to reconvene in regular session?
Motion to reconvene?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to reconvene in regular session, please vote. With a vote of five to zero, the Stillwater City Council is now back in session. City Attorney, was there any recommended action?
No recommended action.
With no recommended action, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn the city council, please vote. With a vote of five to zero, the Stillwater City Council is now adjourned and that concludes our meetings for the evening.